Okay, the regularly scheduled meeting of the Cholo Planning and Zoning Commission for April 11th of 2017 is hereby called to order. Roll call shows Vice Chairman Robertson and Commissioner Bishop as being excused. Invocation this evening will be done by Commissioner Adams, a pledge by Commissioner Barry. Will you all please rise?
Our Father in Heaven, we humbly come together this evening to discuss the affairs of this town. We are grateful for the opportunity we have to live in such a beautiful community and to have the opportunity to strive to make it better. We pray that Thy Spirit may be here as we discuss these things and talk about them, that we'll be able to feel inspired in the things that Thou needs us to do or that we should do for the people of this town, this community. We are grateful for Thee and all Thou does. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, there is no old business on the agenda for this evening, so we'll proceed directly to new business, which is consideration of conditional use permit 602-04-190.
Mr. Chairman, there's an item right before that.
Oh, the election of officers?
Yeah. You're trying to get out of service there, Mr. Chairman.
Listen, we do this all the time. You guys don't step up. All right. That's why I said, "Keep moving this way. Keep moving this way." Okay, let me start by saying congratulations to all of those who were standing for reappointment and were duly reappointed by the council over the last week. So I guess that means we do still have to elect officers, and so I will be happy to accept nominations for, to begin with, I guess, for chairman.
I so nominate Bill Johnson, Commissioner.
There's got to be another nomination. I'm sitting over there with your... All right. Seeing none? All right, okay, we'll close the nominations. Present all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Come on. All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much. I appreciate the confidence. We'll now do likewise for vice chairman. May I have a nomination or more than one, please?
I would nominate Commissioner Robinson again. Can we do that without her being here?
I believe you could nominate in her absence. However, she would still have the opportunity to decline, and if so, you would need to revote at your next meeting.
Okay. I so nominate.
Okay. One second. All right, Commissioner... Vice Chair Robertson has been re-nominated. Do we have any other candidates? Seeing none, we will close and ask for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Subject to her acceptance, Commissioner or Vice Chair Robertson has been re-elected as vice chair. Thank you for pointing that out, sir. I appreciate it. All right, now, we'll go to consideration of conditional use permit 602-04-190, submitted by Cellular One to allow the placement of an 80-foot telecommunications tower in place of an existing 54-foot telecommunications tower at 600 North Ninth Place, that being a Sessage parcel number 210-14-037N. Ms. Fectal-Cutter.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt real quick?
You may, sir.
I apologize. For this matter, I'm going to be declaring a conflict. I was the... Many of you know that my day job is working for the Navajo County Attorney's Office, and I was the individual who reviewed this project and worked with Navajo County and Cellular One on these documents. And so because of that, I'm going to declare a conflict at this time and not participate in this agenda item.
All right. I appreciate your forthrightness. Thank you very much. He needs to leave. Can he stay?
He can stay on the stand here. Usually, common practice would be to recuse yourself from the stand, and actually, we got a little room in the back to go sit in. So Mr. Clark will come get you when we're done.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, now, Ms. Fectal-Cutter.
Thank you. At its regular meeting of July 13th, 2010, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved CUP 60204-133, submitted by Navajo County to allow the county to erect a 54-foot telecommunications tower on property located at 600 North Ninth Place, more particularly described as APN numbers 21014037J and 21014037K at that time. Since that time, Cellular One has worked with the county in replacing the previously approved lattice tower with an 80-foot monopole tower. The subject property is currently zoned C2, which is general commercial, and is the site of the new county health building. The county will be utilizing this tower to facilitate communication between county facilities. Cellular One will be using the tower to help address coverage issues. Any FAA requirements must be met. Placement of the wireless communication towers and antennas for public service use requires a conditional use permit in the C2 zone. Attached are copies of the site plan, as well as the findings of fact, staff recommendations, and the standards for review. Cellular One has submitted for a conditional use permit application requesting to replace the existing 54-foot telecommunications tower at 600 North Ninth Place, that being APN 21014037N, with an 80-foot telecommunications tower. The purpose of this request is to allow for better cellphone service for Cellular One, as well as to provide co-location opportunities for the county. Plans have been provided as part of this application. These plans indicated that the existing 54-foot tall lattice tower would be replaced with an 80-foot tall monopole tower. The existing lattice tower is proposed to be removed, with the new monopole tower to be constructed in its place. The proposed tower location is located north of the existing Navajo County Health Building and is approximately 30 feet from adjacent property line. Light pole height at Frontier Fields, located directly north of this property, are approximately 70 and 80 feet in height, depending on location. Recent changes to city code allow the commission to reduce the setbacks of the tower from an adjacent property line if the purposes of the ordinance would be met. Section 15169A outlines the goals of this ordinance. These goals are: One, protect residential areas and land uses from potential adverse impacts of towers and antennas. Two, encourage the location of towers in non-residential areas. Three, minimize the total number of towers throughout the community. Four, strongly encourage the joint use of new and existing tower sites as a primary option, rather than the construction of additional single-use towers. Five, encourage users of towers and antennas to configure them in a way that minimizes the adverse visual impact of the towers and antennas through careful design, signing, landscape screening, and innovative camouflaging techniques. Six, consider the public health and safety of communication towers. Seven, avoid potential damage to adjacent properties from tower failure through engineering and careful sighting of tower structures. And, protect airport approach corridors. In furtherance of these goals, the City of Cholo shall give due consideration to the city's general plan, zoning map, and existing land uses, and approving sites for the location of towers and antennas. Number six, the current zoning of the surrounding properties includes, to the north, C2, which is general commercial; to the south, DC, which is downtown commercial; and to the east and west, C2, general commercial. The current land uses of the surrounding properties includes, to the north, Frontier Field; to the south, Navajo County Health Building; to the east, Navajo County Building; and to the west, vacant commercial. Per Section 15169D3A of city code, towers shall be painted, subject to any applicable FAA standards, a neutral color so as to reduce visual obtrusiveness. Per Section 15169D4 of city code, towers shall not be artificially lighted unless required by the FAA or the city and any other applicable authority for safety reasons. Transmittal memos were sent to all affected agencies, and no applicable comments were received. Staff has mailed notification letters to property owners within 300 feet of the subject property, and no comments have been received. No comments have been received regarding this conditional use permit. Staff recommendations: After reviewing the standards for review, the findings of fact, visiting the site, and discussions with the applicant, and because the request is consistent with the City of Cholo general plan, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve conditional use permit 60204-190, submitted by Cellular One, to allow the construction of an 80-foot telecommunications tower in place of the existing 54-foot tower on APN 2101403N, subject to the following conditions. All development shall apply with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements, including Section 15169 of city code, Federal Communications Commission (FCC), and Federal Aviation Administration[780.57][780.57](FAA) regulations. Two, the antenna and/or supporting mechanism shall not exceed 80 feet. And three, due to decreased setbacks, liability insurance in an amount acceptable to the city, naming the city as an additional insured shall be provided. Staff, as well as the applicant, are available for questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. All right, we'll begin this evening, as usual, with questions for staff.
When I drove over there, there were two antennas. Will one of them still remain, or will both of them be taken down? Are they two different functions?
Are you referring to two directly adjacent to the building, or one adjacent to the building and one that was kind of out in the middle of the field?
I thought they were both adjacent to the building.
Okay, there is one that's adjacent to the building that will be removed. That's the 54-foot tall tower that we're referring to. There is also, my mouse, there we go, a larger, another antenna that's parked out kind of in this open space to the west of the building. That's referred to as a cowl, and Cellular One can explain a little bit better, but those are temporary antennas, and that will be removed as well as part of this.
Commissioner Barry.
You know, I've got just something that's very trivial, but I was reviewing this document from the county. It looks like Melissa's seal for notary has expired.
Right, the notary seal that's on there, this application was actually completed a little less than a year ago, and we had setback issues, which is why it was not taken to the commission at the time that it was applied for. The recent changes to the city code, which went through the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding reduction in setbacks, if the goals and objectives of the city code were met, that allowed this application then to move forward. So the seal was current at the time that the application was made, certifying that the signature and everything were valid at the time that the application was made.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Adams.
In here, she read that, or we read that it was a multi-use tower. What does that mean? What multi-use purposes, what other things would be used on it?
The tower is designed in such a way that Cellular One will be on the tower. The county will also be able to place some facilities on that tower as well, which is one of the goals that our city code has, is that rather than having multiple towers at one location, let's try to design those towers in such a way that both users can be on one. And that's what was being referred to in the staff report.
Okay, so back to Commissioner Barron's original question. Will there end up being only one tower on the premises, or will there be...
I have to apologize. I'm not aware of the second antenna or tower that's next to the building. That tower that's being referred to, that antenna that's next to the building, is not being removed as part of this application.
Okay. That's... I get it.
The 54-foot tall lattice tower that's there now, that one will be gone, as well as the temporary antenna tower structure that's on the west side of the building.
Okay. Understood. All right. Any further questions for Commissioner Adams?
I do have a follow-up question, real quick, kind of in the same sense. So if it's a multi-use tower, is there other things that will be added to that later? I don't know what that would be, but... And if so, would they have to come to Planning and Zoning also to...
I'm not aware that anything else would be added to the tower at a later date. The conditional use permit is for a proposed 80-foot tall tower. If there were additions in the future, that as long as they didn't increase the height of that tower, those would be permitted under this application. So they would not have to come back for a review or additional action or anything like that.
Any further questions for staff? Any questions for the applicants? All right. Seeing none, we will then open it for public comment. If there's anybody in the audience who chooses to comment on the issue before us this evening, you're welcome to come forward and state your name and address for the record. And seeing none, okay, we will... Commissioner Adams.
You do have one question. I'm sorry.
For the applicants?
Yes, for the applicant, please.
Okay. Would you please come forward and state your name and address for the record?
My name is Dennis Baker. I'm with Cellular One. I live in Pine Top Lakeside.
Thank you.
Just, you talked about different designs and things and kind of camouflage. Is that going to be done on this tower?
No, what we've gone to is more of a single pole application, so everything stays more straight up and down into it, versus the lattice, which things seem to come out on the side of it more. Stealth and camouflage becomes more predominant and noticeable, especially in areas like that where it's wide open. So it's basically going to mirror what the standoffs look like for the light poles. Okay. It'll stay that same galvanized...
You're seeing a palm tree might look a little bit out of place.
Little, little, little bit out of place. A monopole is what they call it.
Point taken.
Okay, just a standard tower, then.
And to clarify on the multi-use, we build the tower for three-carrier and multiple microwaves, and up on the mountain here, we do have to use microwave to communicate back into our network, into our system. So at times, you'll see things that'll get an add to that. That'll go through the building permit process, and at that point, you know, questions or issues arise, and to make sure... The biggest thing is to make sure that it's structurally safe and that, you know, no harm. It's not going to fall on the building, it's not going to fall on somebody into the fields itself.
Just kind of, you know, these towers are up there, and getting a weight on them and things. You know, our winds, they stinker this time of the year. They're awful. You know, is... Does that all... Sure that plays an effect, because that's kind of a wide-open field. I mean, that wind's gonna...
When we buy a tower, what we do is we do a geotech, and what we do is we do a core sample down into the ground, pulls that out, and then... Anybody engineers? Okay, it can be kind of safe here. Then engineers take it, and they look at what that soil does, and they build a foundation based off of that. And if anybody knows engineers, before they put their stamp on it, it's usually over-engineered. So it'll go through all those processes, and before that, again, before this is a conditional use permit, we'll still have to go back through the city for a building permit, and they'll follow... They'll make sure that we follow all those rules onto it for safety. So we have 20 or 30 of them in our, you know, in our network now, so, you know, it's a pretty standard practice.
Yeah, I was just, you know, they changed, and I know it's going to be closer to the line. I just wanted to make sure that that was all properly, and I'm sure it was.
It's all done through the engineering. And like I say, we'll do geotecs, and then goes back to the tower company that we buy it from, and their engineers have to stamp it. So now they have a liability onto it, you know, that those are done. So I've been with them for... I've been in the business for almost 30 years now, and I have not seen a tower that I know of that has come down. Some of the old radios or the guide wires is, you know, you'll hear of those every now and then in the industry, but I have not seen one personally. Never one of ours in our market have we had any issues like that with. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I can add, we have a little bit of experience in that area. When we did the Frontier Field and put the lights in, we went through the same process with the engineering, making sure that the foundation and everything on those lights, because they're essentially the same height and the same wind load as what this would be. And the engineering came back, and those things, the foundations for those had to be about eight feet deep, you know? So that gives us a pretty good reference when the engineering submitted for this pole that we can look at and compare, and, you know, if they're pretty similar, I think we'll know we're in a good spot, and if they're fairly disparate, we might take a little bit closer look at it, so...
To give you an idea, we'll probably be somewhere around four foot wide by about 20 to 30 feet deep for the foundation. It's pretty standard on that size monopole.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Further questions for the applicant? All right, and no questions from the remaining public, I gather? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Okay, then we'll bring it back for a motion from the commission. Commissioner Barry.
I move to approve CUP 602-04-190, submitted by Cellular One to allow the placement of an 80-foot telecommunications tower in place of the existing 54-foot telecommunications tower at 600 North Ninth Place, that being APN 210-14-037N, subject to staff recommendations.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by both Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Barron's. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. A disclaimer, sir?
Yes, thank you. As with any conditional use permit, there is a seven-day appeal period. If no appeal is received by the city clerk within that timeframe, this conditional use permit will be considered effective. Thank you.
Somebody need to go after...
Wonder how long he'd sit there.
Commissioner Clark?
I'll go get him real quick.
Okay. All right, I can let the record show that Commissioner Clark has rejoined. So we'll do the... We will do the call to the public at this particular point. If anybody wants to address any other issue, you may come forward at this particular point. Seeing nobody, okay, then we'll bring it back. We'll close the public session. We'll bring it back to the commission for approval of the minutes from the February 28th meeting. I hope everybody's had a chance to look at those. All those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those minutes are approved.
Motion.
Did I not make a motion? I'm sorry.
I'll move to approve the minutes from February 28th.
Thank you very much.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those minutes have been re-approved. Summary of current events, we'll start with Commissioner Adams.
Just remind everybody that it's fire season. Be careful. At that time, we start thinking about protecting our forests.
Taken. Commissioner Clark?
I'd just like to wish everybody a Happy Easter. Hope you enjoy this Easter weekend, get a little bit of rest from the wind, so...
Commissioner Barron's.
Not a thing. Thank you.
Commissioner Barry.
Well, to kind of go with his deal about the fire, I was on patrol with the county earlier this week, and we run into, looked like somebody had thrown a cigarette or something out by Penn Tail Lake, and it was already to the fence line. And so we were able to get the fire department out there and get it out. It just goes to show you how careless some people can be.
I agree. All right, thank you. Again, I'd just like to reemphasize the reappointment of those of you who stood for reappointment. Thank you very much for that. I'd also like to take just a second and thank the other applicants. We haven't always had a lot of choice when it came to appointing members of the commission, and it's really nice, from my perspective, to see an increased level of interest, and so I'd just like to thank those folks for stepping forward, and please continue to make yourself available when the time is right. And again, lastly, I wish everybody a very safe and happy Easter weekend. Be careful out there, and everybody be safe. Director Tukaskas.
Thank you. I'd like to just echo what's been said previously. Congratulations to our commissioners that were reappointed. Thank you to all those who applied. Also, in regards to fire danger, we did have a fire that popped up today just south of Cholo Lake. Fortunately, fire crews were able to get on it pretty quickly. Not nearly as bad as some of the ones we've seen around here in the past, but it does go to show, even though temperatures are cool and we think, boy, we just got snow a couple weeks ago, we still need to be vigilant. So appreciate everybody just taking care of any type of open flame and being careful with that. So, thank you.
All right. With that, we will consider this meeting adjourned.